Good morning, everyone. It is Wednesday, November 8th at 10:08 a.m. And we are here today at 1520 Market Street for the third public hearing on CDBG funding recommendations and our 2024 annual action plan. I'm going to try and share my screen here so that we can walk through this presentation. And let me know if you all can see that. Thank you very much. Not at all. I appreciate the flag. We're also lucky to have a number of folks here in person. And we'll have a sign up sheet going around. And if you could fill that out, please, that would be wonderful. So agenda for today, we're going to talk just a little bit about CDA, about the HUD formula programs and the process by which the city allocates those funds. And then we're going to go through the board bill and through the city's funding recommendations for annual act or 2024 annual action plan. And then we'll take any questions, any public comment and are excited to hear from you all. So with that, CDA is one of the city's development agencies. We serve as a clearinghouse for federal funds for the city of St. Louis. And we are charged by Mayor Jones with deploying these funds to drive economic justice, by which we mean economic empowerment activities to provide social services and lift up our community as well as neighborhood transformation and community driven development activities to change the physical landscape of St. Louis with a particular focus on affordable housing. And I'm happy to share that we currently have at CDA over 1,700 units in the affordable housing production pipeline. And that's a significant expansion over historic trends. A little bit more history. CDA was founded in 1974 in order to administer Housing Community Development Act funds. And the Housing Community Development Act established essentially the CDBG program and dramatically expanded HUD funding. And CDA was established in order to manage this new revenue stream that was coming into the city of St. Louis. CDA originally also included the planning department. But in 1999, the planning department was split off from CDA. And then similarly, in 1988, SLDC was established. And SLDC is a instrumentality of the city, but formerly formerly a nonprofit corporation that is primarily funded through the city and through CDA. Another note is that in 2012, from 2012 to 2014, HUD essentially came in and intervened in order to dramatically redesign the city's process for administering HUD funds. Because basically what they found, they came in, they did a monitoring visit and they found there's way too much political influence in how the city is awarding and administering these funds. And that's why they actually were the ones who required us to issue a request for proposals and hold a competitive funding cycle. So that's why now, ever since that intervention, we have really run a competitive competitive process that is driven by our staff's ratings. And that's what we did again this year, and we'll get into that. But essentially, every project that comes in is rated by three members of our staff. We average out those ratings and then we award the highest rated projects. So with that, a little bit about the formula grants programs process. And there's four formula grants that the city receives. CDBG, Home, ESG, and HOPWA. And we'll talk about each of these a little bit more in a moment. But all four of those go through the same process. And that process involves first, a five year consolidated plan. First of all, a five year consolidated plan where we tell HUD, what are our goals? What are our objectives? What are we trying to do with these funds? Next, we do annual action plans. So each year. I'm going to project. If you can't hear me, I'll, okay. But you're also in the front, Rashada. But in any case, so the five year consolidated plan is the really critical document. And actually, I'm excited to share that we are going into our next consolidated planning process starting in January 2024. That consolidated plan, we're currently in the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. And we'll be going into our 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan. And that's going to be an opportunity to have a deeper conversation about our priorities for these programs. And really excited to engage in a dialogue with the folks here in the community more broadly about that. So we will launch that process in January 2024. And then we will submit our 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan on November 15th, 2024. Right now, however, we are talking about our 2024 annual action plan. Because we have this five year plan and then we provide each year. Here's our plan for how we're going to meet the objectives and goals set forth in the five year consolidated plan. Then, once we submit that action plan to HUD, we enter into a grant agreement with HUD whereby we can actually start dispersing and deploying these funds. And then finally, once we finish spending the funds or once that year comes to a close, once the 2024, for example, fiscal year comes to a close, we have to submit a consolidated action plan performance report 90 days after. Where basically we tell HUD, here's how these programs went. Here, here are the outcomes. Here, here are the metrics. Here is the performance of these programs. And so that's really the cadence of how these formula programs work. First, we tell HUD, here's our five year plan. Then we tell HUD, here's our one year plan. And then we tell HUD, 90 days after, here's, here's how we did. Here's how we stacked here. This is what we planned to do. Here's what we actually managed to do. So right now, we are talking about the 2024 annual action plan. And so let's focus in now on how this process has, has moved. And we posted this timeline on June 30th. And something else I'll flag here is that we are required by HUD to develop a citizen, a public participation plan required under 24 CFR 91.105. And essentially, what that provides is that we have to go through a public process with iterative feedback over multiple. I don't know that I can make it larger, but I can talk through it and it's quite polite. And if necessary, we can also print out this slide deck for the folks in the room. Yeah. All right. So. So in accordance with our public participation plan, we essentially take public participation at multiple steps in the process. First and foremost, we held a public hearing on July 21st to discuss our funding priorities and collect public input on our funding priorities. Then we issued our request for proposals. This is where we invite the community to submit their proposals for funding. Then we held another public meeting where we provided an overview and explained the RFP and answered questions as well as a capacity building training where we answered again questions from prospective applicants. Once CDBG proposals came in, that's where we went through the rating process that I described. And every single proposal that came in was rated by three CDA staff. We averaged those. And then we identified our funding recommendations by setting thresholds. And I'll share that the thresholds that we set were 90 points for new programs and 85 points for previously funded programs. That's because we understand that continuity is important. And we want to make sure that we are giving programs that we funded historically every chance to retain their funding. But nonetheless, those thresholds were 90 points for new programs and 85 points for previously funded programs. Then we submit our action plan to the Board of Alderman for approval. And this bill authorizes CDA to enter into the grant, to submit the action plan, to enter into the grant agreement with HUD and to spend money. It appropriates the funds. And so we have now gone through that process. We held another public hearing at the HUD's committee on the week of of October 9th, but in fact, it was on October 10th at 11 a.m. And then the Board of Alderman reviewed the bill. Typically, in fact, for the last decade, they have not made any changes to the bill. HUD significantly discourages any changes to the bill because they don't want it to be politically driven. They want it to be driven by CDA staff and expert reviews. And then the Board of Alderman passed the bill out. And it is currently on the mayor's desk for signature. Now we are holding this public hearing to collect input on a final, kind of a final round of input. But really, the purpose is to inform our processes moving forward and our priorities moving forward. And we'll talk more about that shortly and happy to answer any questions about that as well. But then finally, we are tasked with submitting our annual action plan to HUD by November 15, 2023. And again, this is a deadline, a legal deadline that we, we are required to submit our annual action plan 45 days prior to the beginning of the action plan year, which is January 1st, 2024. So that's a timeline. A little bit now about the types of funds that we are talking about and their eligible uses. Because I think that's really important to inform the discussion is what can we actually use these funds for? The biggest category of funds is community development block grant funds. And those can be used for three purposes. One, benefiting low to moderate income households. And when we say low to moderate income, what we mean is for a, is someone who makes under 80% of our area median. Do you need some water, man? Tommy, can we get her some water? Under 80%, no, it's perfect. All right. Under 80% of area median income. 80 may area median income is actually defined on a regional level. So it's quite high. It's higher than you might expect for the city of St. Louis. But if you're an individual, you are low to moderate income. If you make under $53,000. And if you're a family of four, the threshold is $75,900. So you can see that when we talk about serving low to moderate income people, those are the thresholds that we are talking about. And some of those individuals might be considered solidly middle class, at least as far as I would, would think about it myself. The second category of eligible uses is elimination of slums and blight. And that essentially means addressing buildings which are derelict or unsafe and beautification activities and, and things of that nature. And so essentially, even if it doesn't directly serve an individual who's low to moderate income, we can still fund the activity if it is serving the neighborhood and eliminating a blighted neighborhood. And then finally, the third use is urgent need. But this I'll flag is really used very sparingly by HUD. It really requires a natural disaster of some sort to allow us to rely on this justification. And then below each of these national objectives, every single dollar that HUD spends, that's spent from CDBG funds needs to meet one of these three national objectives. But then there's a lot, an even longer list of eligible activities. And so that is what really defines whenever we fund something, we have to find this is the eligible activity that it fits under. And we'll talk about some of those in a moment as well. I also want to flag that some CDBG funds have even more restricted uses. And right, and we've received two special allocations of CDBG funds. CDBG CV funds, coronavirus response funds, as well as CDBG DR disaster relief funds in response to the July 22 flooding. And we are working to develop the allocation plan for those funds with HUD in order to be able to deploy those. The CV funds, the coronavirus response funds are already fully programmed and largely spent. The disaster relief funds, we are in the beginning stages of that process. And we'll be holding additional public, public hearings for input on the DR funds. I will share that at a very high level, our number one priority is to provide direct relief to households impacted by the flood, to build the city's capacity to respond to flood events in the future and to invest in flood plain management and green infrastructure. The next tranche of funds that we are talking about are home investment partnership funds. And these funds are also more restricted in that they can only be used to build housing, to benefit persons of low and moderate income. That's the only eligible use. And you'll see that the way we've deployed those funds or are in deploying those funds in the action plan is solely for that purpose. We have also received a special allocation of home ARP funds. ARP referring to the American Rescue Plan Act. And this is a tranche of $10.6 million, which was awarded to the city on a formula basis to serve individuals who are unhoused, at risk of becoming unhoused, victims of domestic violence and individuals with substance abuse challenges. These are the four qualifying populations. And we will be deploying these funds for the large part. We've already committed about $1 million to a hotel or rather a motel acquisition and conversion project to provide 20 units of permanent supportive housing. But we will be deploying the remaining 9 million roughly in funds pursuant to our February Housing Production NOFA. So again, inviting folks to apply for those housing dollars to serve these four qualified populations. The final two funding sources that we're talking about today are emergency solutions grant dollars, which are administered by the Department of Human Services to provide basic shelter and supportive services to the unhoused, as well as housing opportunities for persons with AIDS dollars, which provide funding for housing individuals living with HIV and AIDS. And those funds are administered by the city's Department of Health. But CDA manages the overall reporting to HUD and the action plan and the consolidated planning process. So with that, what is our 2024 annual action plan? It involves $18 million in community development block grant funds, $3 million in home funds, $1.6 million in emergency solutions grant dollar, grant funds, and $3.1 million in HOPWA funds, as well as the $10.6 million in home ARP funds. I'm not sure, Tommy, by the way, why this seems to be lagging my.
I'm sharing the screen. It takes me a second.
Oh, I thought I was sharing the screen. Okay.
The screen is my screen.
Oh, okay. Thank you. But you can see the awards there. And now I'm moving to the next page. And here you can see just a high level overview of some of the organizations that we fund. And you can see it's split up in a lot of different categories. We provide youth services, after school, summer internships, food access programs, job training programs, senior services, homeless services, economic development, public improvements, administration, beautification, fair housing, utility assistance and a variety of other services, as well as our investments in affordable housing. And then we also fund a variety of public entities. Tommy, if you can move to the next slide. We also fund a variety of public entities and, and city departments to provide services as well. So with that, we are now arriving at a more detailed set of our 2024 funding recommendations to walk through. If you can go to the next slide, Tommy. Where you will see that our, our awards or our, our allocations are distributed among these different eligible activities. So we have one eligible activity is public services. And this is really the most flexible pot of funds, which is where we fund youth services, senior services, food, et cetera, out of. Then there's interim assistance, which is really intended for. That's a slums and blight national objective and is really intended to beautify our neighborhoods. There's low to moderate income homeowner assistance, as well as affordable housing, construction, rehabilitation, economic development investments, public improvements and planning and administration. And something that I'll share that is a really important contextual note for all of this is that two categories here, public services and planning and administration are capped. We don't control how much is awarded under those, under those sections. Public services is capped at 19% of our CDBG awarded funds. And planning and administration is capped at 20%. So with that, let's dig into public services and our awards. So we, again, we held all this, all these hearings. We, we held a competitive funding cycle and then we awarded. We selected the following programs to provide public services. And many of these are programs that we have historically funded for years. The first is Big Brothers Big Sisters of Eastern Missouri Youth Mentoring Program. We also funded the Department of Parks and Recreation Expanded Rec Program where they provide after school activities. The Employment Connection is being funded for the first time for its youth programming focused in Dutchtown. And Gene Slave Boys and Girls Club is being funded again for its after school and summer programming, as is Guardian Angel Settlement Association, which is an early childcare facility and Mission St. Louis's Beyond School Program, which provides tutoring and after school activities to, to children. And I'll note that overall, these, and actually, there's two more youth service programs. There is the Gateway Go Program, which is a program with Slate and ByState whereby we provide 1,000 free public transit passes to young people between the ages of 15 and 24, as well as for the first time, we are funding the Youth and Family Center to provide youth programming to kids in the Near North Side and 14th Ward. And I'll share that collectively, these programs last year, according to our 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, served over 1,500 children. And that's not included, excluding the 1,000 bus passes. For senior services, we are continuing to fund city seniors, as well as the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging, to provide transit to seniors, free rides, free meals and other services to seniors. And they also serve about 1,500 seniors every year. Next, we are continuing to invest in variety of food pantries and food access programs, including with the Corona Light Community Betterment Federation, City Seniors Incorporated, Guardian Angel Settlement Association and Food Outreach. And these also serve well over 1,000 individuals across the city and provide far more meals because they serve each individual multiple times. In addition, we are working with the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency of the city on a housing discrimination awareness program to really make people aware of their rights and empower them to take action to protect those rights with Korea and with other partners. And then we are also continuing to fund Arch by Home Screen, produced by the Tower Grove Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation, which is a really neat system to empower tenants to find housing. And it's really designed, I think, something I really appreciate about it is that landlords can only consider one tenant at a time. And so it really, I think, helps ensure that at risk renters are connected to housing and that landlords can't discriminate against them. Next, we are continuing to fund the City Councilor's Office Problem Property Team. And the Problem Properties Team brings nuisance actions against vacant properties, goes after irresponsible landlords and is really one of the most impactful programs that we fund in terms of its ability to, to get results in terms of either forcing the sale of a property or incentivizing the landlord to clean it up. And I'll mention that it's especially critical in light of the city's new private building stabilization program. A $13 million program run out of the Building Division by which we can go out and bring buildings owned by private landlords up to code. But that involves a lot of legal work. We have to go through notice. We have to. And, and not just notice, in certain cases, we may have to litigate these cases in order to recover from the landlord. It's also critical in order to run the city's special tax sale system. The city currently has about $11 million in outstanding fines and fees on, on buildings where the landlord has not been maintaining them. And so we need the Problem Properties Team to be fully staffed and funded in order to collect, collect these fines and fees and in order to go after responsible landlords. And ultimately, help get these nuisance properties up to code. We also make significant investments in unhoused services, including Covenant House, Gateway Homeless Services, Hope House, Doorways, St. Patrick's Center. And, and St. Patrick's Center. And collectively, these programs house more than 300 individuals, provide more than 300 shelter beds. And we're especially proud to fund Covenant House, which is the city's only youth shelter. But honestly, we're proud to fund all of these partners. And we're very lucky, I'll say, as a whole. CDA doesn't do any of this, provide any of these services directly. We're really privileged to have a strong ecosystem of nonprofit partners that really do this work and deliver the impact. We are also awarded two reentry programs, including the Criminal Justice Ministry and Employment Connection. And these are programs that we have funded for a long time and support hundreds of individuals as they leave jail to reenter to society, to provide access to housing, to provide access to workforce development services, mental health services, et cetera. And then we also fund job training programs, including with Employment Connection, Launch Code, Mission St. Louis, the Urban League and St. Patrick's Center. And I'll mention here, last year, we served over 500 individuals with these workforce development and job training programs. Two of these programs are new. The Employment Connection Green Jobs Program and the Launch Code Foundation Job Training Program. And we're really excited to launch these programs that are a little bit more targeted towards specific growth industries in terms of coding and software, as well as the green infrastructure sector. And the Green Jobs Program is a really good fit as well as we work to, we have recently applied for about $14 million in solar for all funds to produce, provide energy efficient and solar installation on affordable housing. More public services. This is really the longest piece here. And we provide a variety of beautification public services, including funding Operation Brightside, which completed over 2,000 graffiti removals last year and SLACO's Keeping it Clean Neighborhood Beautification Initiative, as well as Seed St. Louis, which provides support to community gardens and orchards across the city. And is also working to establish new orchards and expand those community gardens. And we think this is really essential, given that the city has over 20,000 vacant properties. Finding creative ways to bring them back online and activate them to provide an asset and transforming our vacant properties from a liability into an asset for the community. Another new program is that with the Department of Health, a $250,000 maternal health program, which will be deploying which to provide baby boxes and other, as well as educational support to new mothers, obviously focused on low to moderate income mothers. And I'll just share that this was a big priority for Mayor Jones, seeing the need of the community. And we're really excited to start this program with the Department of Health. And then finally, we're providing residential leadership training and capacity building awards to SLACO and the Urban League. And these are both programs that we funded historically. And in particular, the Federation of Block Units has been funded for a long time and, and does wonderful work. With that, I'll transition now to the interim assistance portion. And again, this is really designed to activate blighted properties and to beautify our neighborhoods. 1.777 million of these funds is allocated, as it was last year as well, to the Land Reutilization Authority to provide lot maintenance to their 10,000 parcels of vacant property, including 9,000 vacant lots. And 500,000 is being established, used to fund a new program, which grew out of collaboration with the Vacancy Collaborative. And to fund, essentially, we're thinking about, we're calling them community development grants. But another thing we might call them is just quick wins grants. They're really small grants, less than $10,000 to, for a neighbor to beautify a vacant property or for a community garden or what have you. And just looking for those creative, quick wins that we can deploy across the city and make a difference at a smaller scale. And excited to see, this is the first time doing this and really excited to see what people will propose. And then additionally, we, moving on now to homeowner assistance. We are continuing to support the Housing Partnerships Down Payment Assistance Program. The way this program works is that when we build a CDA funded or subsidized affordable home, we also like to provide down payment assistance. And so this is up to $10,000 of down payment assistance. I'll also share that even though it's not HUD funded, today, we're talking only about HUD programs. But there is an ARPA funded down payment assistance program, which will be launched before the end of the year and provide up to $50,000 of down payment assistance. And we're really excited to be working on that in partnership with the St. Louis Development Corporation and STIFEL to set up that larger down payment assistance program. We also continue to support our Healthy Home Repair Program. And you'll hear a little bit more, yes, there's a whole slide on home repair. We're really proud of our home repair program because it provides critical services to, in particular, senior low to moderate income homeowners, although we serve any low to moderate income homeowner. But it's so critical because we know that there are about. about fourteen thousand cost burdened homeowners in the city of St. Louis who can't afford the maintenance on their properties. And that's why we have a waitlist of about a thousand individuals. And the need here is just extraordinary. And that's why we've been working really hard to scale the program. Tommy, if you can go to the next slide. Or actually, yeah, that's why we've been working really hard to scale the program and in fact, have scaled from completing a hundred and fifty-five, serving a hundred and fifty-five homeowners last year to this year, we've served two hundred and eighty-eight homeowners to date in 2023. And that expansion of the program, which to be clear, still is not enough to meet the extraordinary need, which we have a waitlist of one thousand. But that expansion has been driven primarily by the infusion of fifteen million dollars in ARPA funds. And you can see the expenditures in that table on the bottom, that last year, we spent about two million. This year, we're on track to spend closer to four million. And it just could not be more critical. We are also working on an online intake portal because we know that one of the things that can be frustrating about the program is communication and knowing the status and where you are in the process. And so we're working to establish that online portal where you'll be able to follow your application and know exactly where you are in the process. And I'll also share that one of the things that has accelerated as well on the ARPA side is the fact that we are able to, we don't, no longer need to provide historic and environmental reviews under the ARPA guidelines. But that is still a requirement under the HUD program. And so that's why HUD-funded home repairs go a little bit slower. And we're going to continue to expand this and continue to invest in this over the coming years. Next slide. With that, the next category is our Affordable Housing Construction and Rehab Program. This year, we've allocated five point five million dollars to affordable housing production and preservation. And those funds will be awarded to specific projects pursuant to our February Spring Housing Production NOFA. And looking forward to seeing those applications. We also set aside two million dollars for the St. Louis Housing Authority to bring a hundred and twenty-seven units of vacant properties online. And the reason that this is so critical is because we have, and you can see in the tables below, we have thirty-six thousand five hundred cost burdened tenants in the city of St. Louis. That's about forty-five percent of city tenants are tenant households are cost burdened. And collectively, and when we say cost burden, what that means is that they pay more than thirty percent of their income towards rent and utilities. And when you do the math, when you look at how much they're paying versus how much they can afford to pay thirty percent of their income, that difference sums up to a hundred and seventy million dollars a year. And that's a hundred and seventy million dollars a year of wealth transferred from low to moderate income tenants to their landlords. And so we are really prioritizing rental housing, but we're also really prioritizing the highest impact, biggest bang for your buck investments that we can make to bring more rental housing online. And the answer to that isn't just building new housing, although that's a piece of the puzzle. It's also taking the fifteen hundred vacant units in the city of St. Louis, which are vacant for want of five to twenty thousand dollars in investment because they need new appliances, drywall repair, new furnishings or what have you. It's minor stuff, but it's preventing these units from coming back online because those owners don't have the liquidity because it is really difficult and expensive to manage affordable housing in general, but especially now and here. And they don't have that liquidity to bring these vacant units online. And the Housing Authority especially is incredibly strapped for resources as they have our stewards over the arguably most vulnerable community in the city. And so we are supporting the Housing Authority in bringing these a hundred and twenty-seven units online at a expense of about a little under fifteen thousand a unit. And that's terribly exciting because typically, it costs us over a hundred thousand dollars to get a unit, to build a new unit or to rehab a unit. And this is really a high-impact investment. And then finally, there's a million dollars for our housing team. We have a wonderful housing team made up of our housing director, architect, engineers, housing analysts, and they manage our over seventy-nine housing awards, some of which are HUD, some of which are ARPA-funded. So a little bit more on the process and the projects that we are funded, funding. We are going to issue a Housing Production NOFA in February 2024. That'll be our next opportunity for developers and nonprofits and others to apply for funding. And then, once those awards are made, in summer twenty-four, typically, we go through six to twelve months of predevelopment before entering construction. And because these are HUD funds, every project prior to starting construction must complete Section 106 Environmental Historic Review, must have a Section Three Compliance Plan and before we go to execute the contract in dispersed funds. We also need a final budget and design drawings. And then at a high level, I'll share again that we have about over two hundred for-sale homes in the production pipeline citywide, as well as over twenty-four hundred rental units in the production pipeline. And this is a pretty dramatic expansion of our production pipeline. Between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, the city supported the construction of twelve hundred and sixty-one affordable units, of which only thirty-nine were affordable at under thirty percent AMI, and only sixty-five were for-sale homes. So we are really leveraging both HUD funds as well as the one-time ARPA funds to dramatically expand and in fact, over double our affordable housing production pipeline. And not only are we doubling it, we're really also trying to diversify it. So we add in housing that is really as diverse as our city in terms of meeting the needs of the unhoused with investments into tiny homes and permanent supportive housing, meeting the needs of the tenants, who as I mentioned, are dramatically overpaying and need more access to affordable housing, but also meeting the need of upwardly mobile families who need access to affordable for-sale housing in order to build well, strengthen neighborhoods and knit the fabric of our neighborhoods back together. Next, we move on to public improvements. And there, we are funding Habitat for Humanity to provide various transit walkability, mobility improvements in Hyde Park and Old North. And this is as a kind of attachment to a previous award of five million dollars in ARPA funds for Habitat for Humanity to build nineteen homes, in new single-family affordable homes in Hyde Park and Old North. And so as folks are moving into these blocks and these neighborhoods, we want to make sure that they are ADA accessible, that they are safe, and that we have walkable communities. We are also continuing to support the Fifty-nine-O-eight Etzel Community Center with Cornerstone. This sixty-two thousand dollar five hundred award is on top of a ARPA award of, I think, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And is really intended to create a space for the community and dovetails with other investments that we're making in the West End, including the recently completed Etzel Place Six project, a ninety-eight unit multifamily development that's just down the street, as well as over a dozen single-family homes on Kate's Cabiny and Vernon, as well as an early childcare center that's being established on Page with the Favored Foundation, which you can see down to, two bullets down, will provide forty seats of early childcare, again, in the West End. And so it's really about holistic neighborhood revitalization. The West End has a wonderful neighborhood plan that was recently adopted by the Planning Commission. And we are trying to deploy funds to implement it insofar as we can and such that the whole can be greater than the sum of its parts. We are, Tommy, this is an out-of-date version of these slides, but we'll move on. City of St. Louis Recreation Center improvements, we are awarding one point nine six eight million dollars for City of St. Louis Rec Centers to support new roofs, electrical panels, so that we can, we can bring those rec centers and serve families across our city. This, again, has been a big priority for Mayor Jones, who recently pushed to extend the hours of our rec centers to one A.M. And we want to make sure that these rec centers are in the shape that honestly, our community deserves. And these investments are long overdue. And I should flag also dovetail with over two and a half million dollars in ARPA investments in our rec centers, as well as additional capital committee investments. And there's just a lot of different funding streams that are going into the city rec centers to do those roof replacements, electrical panels, HVAC systems, and other critical repairs. We're also supporting Jubilee Community Development Corporation. And this one point three five eight million is for the rehab of Elliot School. And it again dovetails, which is, it's in College Hill slash O'Fallon, right on the edge. And it really dovetails with, again, another ARPA award of five hundred thousand for the same project, as well as the award I mentioned earlier of home ARP funds to convert the economy in on North Grand into permanent supportive housing. And the purpose here is really to serve unhoused individuals and in particular, individuals struggling with opiate addictions, fentanyl and other addiction with both twenty units of permanent supportive housing, but also supportive services, mental health supports, et cetera. Next, moving on to economic development. You'll see that we are continuing to fund the St. Louis Development Corporation's Facade and Public Improvements Program, as well as Justine Peterson's Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance and Training Program, which provides low-interest loans to small businesses in order to empower prospective entrepreneurs. And then finally, we come to the Planning and Administration section, where we are. It takes money to spend money. We need lawyers at the City Councilor's Office. We need grants administrators and community development specialists and grants managers and project managers at CDA. We need our accounting team at the Comptroller's Office and city planners at the Planning and Urban Design Agency, as well as our partners at SLDC, who support us in terms of finding contractors for our home repair program, MWBE compliance, capacity building for minority contractors. And then we are, for the first time, funding Project Connect directly through CDA with CDBG funds. And Project Connect is the area focused on six target neighborhoods on the near north side of St. Louis, Har Square, Columbus Square, Hyde Park, Vanderloo, Old North, and St. Louis Place, excuse me. And it's really focused on harnessing the opportunity presented by the two billion dollar new NGA campus by the proposed north-south metro link route, which goes up Jefferson, and thinking about going through a community-driven process to think about our goals and objectives and vision for each of these neighborhoods and to ultimately develop neighborhood plans. And this is really essential because we know that with this two billion dollar facility and with light rail, these neighborhoods will change. And how can we ensure that the community is in the driver's seat? And this work has already been ongoing, but it does require additional funding, and this will support it. And there are, in fact, already six neighborhood committees made up of residents of those neighborhoods and open to, to, they actually, they were going to do random selection, but they wound up just inviting everyone who applied to serve on those steering committees to serve on the steering committee. And so it's a very open process and excited to see the neighborhood plans that come out of it. So with that, that finally brings us to a close. I know that was a lot. Thank you all for your patience. And happy to, again, this is out of date. That should say public comment and questions, but excited to hear from you all. Take your time. That's right, North Newstead, we have historically funded North Newstead. But, and we are continuing to fund North Newstead with four hundred and fifty, ninety thousand in ARPA funds that were awarded to North Newstead. But this year, unfortunately, through the competitive process, North Newstead was rated under the eighty-five-point threshold. I can't speak to specifically those ratings, but I can share that in general, North Newstead submitted four programs. One was a seventy-five thousand dollar request for public safety, for their safety, so crime prevention work, that rated at seventy-nine point two one. And it's not a commentary on the program because actually, last year, that would have been enough to be funded. But it's a testament to the extremely strong funding round that we had this year. And that the threshold was at ninety points for new programs and eighty-five points for previously funded programs. But it is, we strongly encourage North Newstead to apply again next year. And, but we did go through our rating process and unfortunately, they did not rate above that threshold. Not through this process because, again, we already went through our rating process. And this is what HUD has required us to do, is we hold a competitive process and we rate everything, and then we award the highest rating projects. And so we can't undermine the integrity of that process without getting slapped by HUD. That said, we are funding North Newstead, again, with four hundred and ninety thousand in ARPA funds. And on top of that, if we're talking specifically about the crime prevention work, there is an RFP open right now in the Office of Violence Prevention that is an excellent fit for this kind of work. And we would strongly encourage North Newstead to apply.
Thanks. Sorry to interrupt. No, under the twenty twenty-four annual action plan, they are not receiving funding for those senior services. I know they historically have had a thirty thousand dollar elderly services program. Unfortunately, that one also rated on the last seventy-nine point two two. And so, we are not being funded for that support. Again, there are other funding opportunities with the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging. But, and there's always future funding cycles as well. But unfortunately, we have to follow the integrity of our process. We love working with North Newstead. They're some of our favorite partners. And we also, I'll note, not only awarded four hundred and ninety thousand dollars to North Newstead through ARPA, but have also been working with other partners, including the St. Louis Equity Fund, to secure additional support for North Newstead as well. We value our partnership with North Newstead, but unfortunately, we can't undermine the integrity of our process. But we are happy to engage and follow conversations with the partners in terms of exploring other funding opportunities.
Well, the reason I speak on this because that area, the homeless, the seniors in that area, as they ASB age out and not have our homes, you know, kept up in good condition, then we have to move out or leave the city, which is like for myself. But I would hate to see any of my fellow seniors lose their homes because they can't keep up the repair. Because, you know, most of us are on fixed end jobs. So whereas if you want to get a repair done on your own without assistance, it really costs you a lot.
I couldn't agree more. I totally understand the need. And in fact, that is why we have allocated fifteen million dollars in ARPA funds to expand our home repair program and why we have provided this year two hundred, over two hundred and eighty-eight. And that's over a hundred and forty more than we did last year home repairs. These are major home repairs, ten thousand dollars on average, home repairs. And so, comparison just to, so we can be specific, the North Newstead Elderly Services Program was a thirty thousand dollar program that was, it wasn't directly providing those home repairs either. And so I actually think we are investing dramatically in order to meet the need that you have.
So actually, you said that they apply again, so you also So actually, you said that they apply again. So you also talked about this 25, 29. So that's that's that five-year plan that you're talking about?
Sort of. The five-year plan doesn't award money. It just says, here are our five-year goals and objectives. But then simultaneously, we will be doing our 2025 action plan. So this, I just presented our 2024 action plan. We'll be doing the same thing then next year with our 2025 action plan, and we strongly encourage those applications. We also strongly encourage you all to engage in the consolidated planning process, because that's how we say, what are our goals in terms of how many housing units do we want to produce? How many crime prevention events do we want to hold? How many lots do we want to be involved? Right? So when we set those goals, we have to, we have scarce resources, right? So we can't do everything 100%. We have to figure out what are the smart attainable goals? And those priorities are going to guide then how we review ratings, how we review projects and how we score projects in terms of how much they advance those goals. In a way, when you say recyclable, I'm going to interpret that as two things that I could imagine. One is some of our activities generate program income, right? So for example, when we fund certain childcare services, right? Some of those involve some fees. Those are called program income, and they do need to come back and then be reinvested back into the same program. So that's an example. Or an even better example is with our housing construction, right? If the individual resells the home, then there's an agreement in place that we capture a piece of that as well. So that's our program income, and that's a recycle pool in a way, and that comes back in and is subject to all the same rules of the CDBG funds. So that's one example. In terms of, say, the project doesn't happen, right? Or a project doesn't spend all of their money. Then we go through what is called a substantial amendment process, which is essentially what we have to do, is we have to, and actually, the process is different depending on whether it's over 15% or not of our annual allocation. But let's assume it is. We have to go through another public hearing process, and we submitted to HUD and say, HUD, we want to take this $2 million that we aren't able to spend on what we said we would in our action plan, and instead we want to spend it on X, Y, Z. And X, Y, Z is, can be either public entities, in which case we won't open that up for competitive funding, right? We'll just say Department of Health or whoever, they can use it for X, Y, Z. But what we also often do is that we will fold it into our annual funding cycle, right? So that's actually what we did this year. What we did this year in 2024 is we said, we actually have almost $5 million of funds that are not going to be spent on what they were originally allocated to. And that's why we include, we invited applications for that this year in our funding cycle. And in fact, if you look at our awards, the total awards that were made are $5 million more than our 2024 allocation, because essentially, we are substantially admitting we're reprogramming for what I
Noel, if we can, we have some questions coming in from Zoom. There are two that are similar. Basically, could you describe who the Raiders or Raiders are? And then in terms of CDA staff, are we diverse? Do we live north of Page specifically? Do we live all over the city? And what's CDA staff in terms of our Raiders? Could you talk about some of our experience in community development and nonprofit experience?
Sure. We have a very diverse staff. I can't quote you the numbers off the top. I don't know if any of our team wants to quickly assess some numbers, but we do have an extremely diverse staff in terms of geographic residency, in terms of age, in terms of race, in terms of gender. And the staff are the ones who do ratings. With that said, something that I want to explore in the consolidated planning process is a community rating process. Because I do think that long-term democratizing CDA and democratizing this process is really critical. And so I only got here a year ago and inherited a lot of processes. And one of these is this internal rating process, but actually, historically, back in 2015 and 2016, there was a community rating act.
Were folks able to hear that? Should I restate all of that?
I think we're okay, just for the next ones. And then for the next questions, we'll just ask you to I'm sorry to interrupt, it's very
No, just at a high level, we do have a diverse team with significant experience in community development and who has managed these programs for decades, combined probably have 50 years or more. Unfortunately, I don't have this information off the top of my head, but we can provide it. But they have experience managing these programs, and I've been really impressed with our team and their ability to identify both challenges and opportunities that programs may face instantly and well before I see them. And we're fortunate to have a great team, but with that said, we also want to incorporate a community rating process as an element of our process. We won't stop staff rating, but we want to have more community input on the front end.
One fourth question from our Zoom. This question, I think, related to the timeline. Basically, where are these recommendations now? Have they gone through Board of Aldermen processes? Are they awaiting signatures? Has it been legislated? If you could just tell us where these are in terms of becoming legislation, and then what role this community public input has.
Yes. So as I mentioned at the top, this is actually the third public hearing that we're holding as part of this funding cycle. The first one was at the beginning, before we even issued the RFP. The second one was at the HUD's committee while the Board of Aldermen had the board bill in front of them. And this is a final one, once the board bill has been passed, to inform the public of the final awards and invite recommendations for the future. We will always, our responsibility and our requirement is to respond to public comment. But for all the reasons I've stated previously in terms of a competitive process, and the fact also, let me flag that we have this public services gap. Because if we were to reallocate funds or change funds at this point, it wouldn't just mean adding funds for North Newstead. It would also mean taking funds away from another organization that's been awarded funds for public services and rated higher. So I know that that feels harsh, but we have to follow our ratings. That's really the only fair way to do it. But as discussed, I do think that democratizing our rating process and opening it up is a long-term goal.
For a second. And I'm going to turn, this is my phone. We don't have any more questions from Zoom, so if there's any in the room? If you can just project from where you are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the question I saw there on your slide, it has some information concerning redlining. And specifically for that community, that or those communities that have been redlining in order to ensure that they actually get funding or seek organization in that community. Going to that community to actually take the lead in going to that community, saying we know they're redlining centuries and century, and that will be our point to put this in place so that and we're going to manage in order to get rid of what was prior, what used to be organizations that or in that community that can ask for specifics concerning some of the big like
Great question. And yes, all of the above, in particular with how we are administering
Unmute on yours, I know this is
All right. Yes, in particular with how we've administered American Rescue Plan Act funds, we have not used redlining as an explicit factor for CDBG funds yet. Again, that's something as we enter our consolidated planning process, it's an opportunity to really have this dialogue about what our criteria are and our priorities are. But I can tell you that with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, one of the criteria by which we awarded bonus points was the Economic Justice Index. And the Economic Justice Index, one of those variables is, has a community been redlined in the past? Another one is how average household income, another one is health, life expectancy, another one is violent crime rate, another one is educational attainment, another one is access to internet. So we are really trying to prioritize communities that have been historically marginalized and disinvested in and reverse that, because we know that that disinvestment was a product of public policy. It was a product of restrictive covenants and redlining and appraisal gaps and white flight and highways destroying neighborhoods. And that in order to rebuild our neighborhoods and revitalize that neighborhood, it's going to take the same level of intentionality and creativity in the opposite direction. And so if you look at our map of awards, and I'm sorry, we don't have one here, we probably should have, but you will see that it is concentrated in the areas of the city with the highest levels of need, including both North St. Louis, but also pockets of Dutch Town and Grabaway Park and Mount Pleasant.
So, my name is Charles Bryce. My comments are to be viewed as I am a private citizen. I'm here to testify about the recognition of North Newstead with 2024 CDT. As you all know, North Newstead has been a beacon of support for North St. Louis residents today since 1993. In fact, it's been a force to help stabilize North St. Louis. I would never question the staff of CDT, of the CDA. I would, however, personally, with some qualifications, if the questions were related to the points that were awarded. And also, while I'm not a fan of legacy, I think the impact that the North Newstead Association has had on North St. Louis, whether you say Page, whether you say Delaware. And I think the people here today are here because of their concern that a new entity will come in not knowing them, not knowing the history, not knowing the lifestyle that folks live, not understanding how to get things done in a timely manner, will only hurt the process. And I think that is something that should also be taken into consideration. When you change ownership of the dollar, you also change the philosophy of the organization and how they're going to use those dollars in the future. So I noted that you had a 79.1 or 79.2 rating again. I don't know what the rating was based on. Certainly don't know what questions were asked. But I do know this. North Newstead has been an important partner for a lot of people and a lot of organizations in North St. Louis. And at some point, that should be accounted for. Maybe not this round, which conceivably might be over, but in consideration of the years of service and commitment, every member of the organization, every member of Mediaico, to their act. So one of us doesn't sleep at night. But because they're there and because they're a force, they can come to them and ask them the questions. People ask them for support. They're an important element of North St. Louis. And that has to, in some reports, count for something. So with that, I certainly thank you all for the opportunity. Look forward to working and engaging with you all in the future. Fan of North Newstead, obviously. Not a fan because they do the work, and that has to count for something.
Thank you, sir. It certainly does count for a lot, and we, again, value our partnership with North Newstead and are in no way divesting generally from North Newstead. Again, we just awarded $490,000 to North Newstead for beautification. To your point about the ownership of the funds, which I think is really important to your point. So historically, North Newstead received three awards. The Crime Prevention Award for about $70,000, the Senior Service Award for about $30,000, and the Beautification Award for about $35,000. So that's a total, first of all, of about, what, 60, 140, 150,000 is the historic funding level. And again, we just awarded $490,000 to be spent over three years. So you can see that the overall level of funding is relatively stable, if not increased. But second, with respect to those three programs and ownership, safety, elderly, and beautification, beautification certainly remains a North Newstead project and investment. With respect to public safety and crime prevention, we did not award a crime prevention alternative. There's not another entity that's going to be taking that on. Now, I will say again that my broad suggestion on crime prevention is to go to the Office of Violence Prevention, because we at CDA are not experts at crime prevention. We're experts at community development. But the Office of Violence Prevention has an RFP open now. It is open, where they are awarding millions of dollars for crime prevention. And so that would be my strong recommendation on that. And then as for senior services, you saw that we awarded two senior services contracts, to Seniors Inc. and the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging. So again, not necessarily replacing one program with another. Those are programs that we funded historically for a long time. And so this is not, it certainly wasn't an intentional comment on North Newstead. It was just the outcome of our rating process. And we look forward to engaging in a dialogue with the community and with you all and with the community over the coming year about our processes and how we can strengthen them, because that's a conversation I'm really eager to have. Finally, to your point about what are the criteria, at a very high level, and we did actually share the scorecard with North Newstead for their review so that they know the points and the priorities. But at a very, and I'm not going to go through a very detailed scorecard right now, but at a very high level, we look at two or three things. One, we look at qualifications and experience, right? Can you do what you propose to do? Is it financially feasible? Do you have that capacity? And North Newstead obviously does very well on that typically, because we funded them for a long time, and that is also where that track record of success comes in. The second place where it comes in is impact, essentially, and need. And that's the, and there's a lot of questions that we ask and a lot of different pieces to that. But and I can't comment on why the projects didn't score as well as they may historically have, or why, I really think a lot of it was, it was a very strong funding round in general. But we are, again, happy to continue to engage and debrief and continue those discussions. And I want to emphasize that CDA's funding for North Newstead remains strong overall. It's just shifted from CDBG to ARPA briefly, but we strongly encourage North Newstead to reapply in the future, and we encourage North Newstead to explore other funding opportunities with the Office of Violence Prevention and possibly others as well. And we're happy to be partners in making North Newstead aware of those.
Ending something, I've written a letter, and one of the most remarkable aspects that we found, I've found and our group has found in North Newstead, services and in response to this, is that unlike large organizations and city departments, there are deep commitments with the area now. Most of us that are on the side or members of a group, active overdose, that operate out of the [inaudible] and during the past, since COVID, they have really helped seniors in that they have helped us with our And during the past, since COVID, they have really helped seniors in that they have helped us with our building. Because without them, a lot of seniors would have been disconnected from other people. But this week was long and all of that that was going on, everybody had high praise for them. These are small things to other people, but they're large things for especially those that are elderly. They not only help with the viewing of our meetings, they come out and they help seniors with computers and all their logistics stuff. So I don't know how people score, what they know about the small things that are large to the community that they do the sports for. But in the future, I would so hope that, you know, they take into consideration. And I don't know if you will see the letter from me, but I would like to leave it and maybe whoever does the review could take this letter into consideration. We also had people to sign up on sort of a petition that spoke to this. That's just a comment that I.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you for that.
So the public has access to the ratings, the criteria from where?
North Newstead does, and they can share it internally, but we can also provide it to you.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming out. We call here. My name is Constance. I am the director of the North Newstead Association, the organization that we've been talking a lot about here at this public hearing. Two things that our board members wanted us to think about when we were considering whether or not North Newstead should issue a public stage was question number one. Will these programs exist despite North Newstead not receiving the funding? The second was, in light of the financial challenges that are faced by community development corporations like North Newstead that's been around for 30 years, what else can you guys do to us? It's like, take away the funding. So I'm here to share what I know. I don't know if funding decisions are going to change. I don't know if these of us showing up at the public hearing is going to change recommendations. I don't know if recommendations have ever been changed. But what I do know is that North Newstead is a 30-year-old organization. We've been in community, as Charles said, for a very long time. We're responsive. We show up at community meetings and we stay until the end. Because we don't see our safety program as an isolated program. We don't see elderly services as an isolated program. We don't see beautification and minor hall repair, all of those programs as an isolated program. We see them as interacting with one another. And that is the value of having a CDC provide these services. Because our folks who are participating in our elderly service program are also the resident leaders of our safety program, are also the folks who are seeking home repair. We're working to keep communities grounded and in place. And how do we do that? We do it with community development that has programs that hit all of these different programs. What I do know is that the programs that North Newstead delivers, the quality that we deliver it at, the responsiveness that we deliver it at, that is not going to be there next year. I talked to so many people in community where there are larger organizations that are getting the dollars that they don't, community members don't see those organizations in their community. But North Newstead, what I do know is that federal and state funds are really difficult to manage. And time and time and time again, North Newstead is described as the model organization when it comes to compliance reporting. It's a slap in the face when we go to meetings and they say, "North Newstead, you are a model organization. However, we're not going to give you any funding for 2024." I understand that there's a change in the scoring, but what Charles said in terms of longevity program is important. What I know is that consistent funding has allowed North Newstead to improve our program year after year, to grow our programs year after year, to make sure that we're still meeting community needs, to make sure that we're flexible so that we can meet the needs that Ms. Rosa talked about, of providing the one-on-one technical support. The pandemic happened after funding decisions were made during the, and then we went out because we chose, because we knew that there were folks going to be left behind. We chose to pivot our program so that we can still address the needs of the community. If it's a larger organization, that may not be a. I know that our programs, although it's labeled as crime prevention, as the program where North Newstead staff members attend over 30 meetings every year, we're there until the very end. Paul's right, we barely sleep because we know that this is important. We know that listening into community is important. And we know that the reason why so many people still engage in our program is because we help build the capacity of the four stations. We know that across the four neighborhoods, we don't look alike. We know that power doesn't look alike from one place to another. But what can North Newstead do as a mesolabel community development to support the microlevel community development? To make sure copies are ready to be made, to make sure mailings are going out, to make sure seniors who don't have emails still get the flyers so they can still attend the neighborhood event they want to go to. So the unsaid things, North Newstead supporting the capacity of existing organizations and allowing neighborhood associations to do their work is something that's not captured in the report, in the scoring part that we have now. So I know North Newstead, we have a strong history. I know that federal funds are hard to manage. I know that we're a model organization. I know that consistent program has allowed us to improve on it. And I know that funding decisions happen, but the funding decisions made, and we were sharing this information two months before the end of the year. That's two months to pivot programs that have been funded for over seven, eight, nine years. So as of December 31st, these programs are going to evaporate. Yes, we will explore other options with the Office of Violence Prevention, with Senior Fund and other organizations to provide these services. But there's going to be a lag. There's going to be a gap. And whether or not another organization that was funded is able to ground themselves in community in the meantime and provide the same responsive work that meets the community, that's something I don't know. Thank you for that.
I just want to say one thing. And in conjunction today, I am no longer a city resident. And that is because I was on a waiting list before the pandemic came. The house that I lived in was the Urban League and Healthy Homes both came out and did assessments. And they were supposed to do repairs to, I had a flood in my basement, which knocked out my heating unit and my heating and water, my water tank. They were coming in, they were going to do this and do that. They were asking about making changes from my, from my heating, from radiator heat to forced. I mean, there was a plan that they were going to do. This is, this is from the Urban League. It never happened. And when I would call back and ask for the person that was working with me, they would tell me where they, they got to do with their supervisor. This went on and on. COVID hit. Then when I got back on base, they said they didn't have people to do the repairs. They didn't have the materials to do the repairs. As a result, I wound up having to sell my home and move out. I would hate to have that happen to somebody. These people didn't know me because they weren't in my neighborhood here. So I can't say they didn't care. I think they evidently didn't care enough. But had that been money that were allocated in large funds for this part of the city, North City, and came through North Newstead or other communities, associations in that area, I believe knowing the people that need the help that they would have been got. Because all the other things that I did ask them in North Newstead, when I had to leave the premises, my home, they did. Grass cutting is something that's very important. I had a tree of them that fall off the tree. It got cut up and stacked away. Those are small things to other people, but it was very large to me. So I'm pretty sure there are other people in the room that may have issues. Doesn't seem like little small issues. But if you go to them and ask for help, you've gotten that help. Or you were referred to someone that could help you, and you didn't have to pay astronomical amounts to get it done.
It's absolutely essential, which is why we are expanding our investment in both home repair and broader neighborhood beautification activities, including with North Newstead. I want to make, I would also just, Constance, your point about the potential lag is that.
Something that we can look at is extending or amending the 23 contracts in order to, in conjunction with other funding sources, see what we can do to minimize the operational impact. There are other organizations we have funded in the past that have missed a funding cycle or missed funding. And we've been able to kind of smooth it out in terms of how we administer the awards. So those are conversations that we can have. And I really want to be clear that the fact that these funds were not awarded this year is not a reflection or commentary overall on the value of North Newstead. We have an immense, and I think it's a testament to the value and impact of North Newstead, you all coming out, and I really appreciate you all being here today. And we are, we are in relationship, in partnership on a variety of fronts. And we look forward to continuing to work with North Newstead so that you can continue to serve the people in this room and the community in North St. Louis.
You've mentioned the 490 that North Newstead has received in ARPA dollars. I think it's misleading to say that we won't tackle because the 490 is specifically for beautification only. It's not going to allow us to support existing programs of elderly services and safety. I want to make that clear for the folks in the room. And y'all know that we got the 490, but that does not mean that we can continue to support the programs that we have to do with those.
Are there any other questions or comments? Do we have any other questions or comments online?
All right. With that, thank you all very much for your time and your engagement. I really strongly encourage you all to engage in our consolidated planning process as we can talk about our priorities and our rating process in more depth. Thanks, everyone.